Is upon us, and so we will call the Hastings Planning Commission to order. This is a regular meeting of the Planning Commission. We have two items on the agenda. But the first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our November 13th meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Do I hear a motion for approval?
Motion to approve. Motion to approve.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes. All right. Item number two. McShane Development Comprehensive Plan Amendment and Rezoning 2017-49. Staff report by Justin Fortin.
Sure. Mr. Chair. Would just like to recuse myself from discussion on this item as I'm employed by McShane Development and would be responsible for delivering any future projects on the site.
All right.
Yep, that'd be great, thank you.
Public hearing too.
Is it? Is this really a public hearing? This one too?
Yes, this would be too. Okay. Mr. Chair, Planning Commissioners, what we have before us tonight are two actions for consideration and a public hearing related to them. They both relate to a property which is located on the northwest corner of Pleasant Drive and Highway 55 as shown here. This is North Frontage Road. This is the county offices at this location, the library down here. And the property is about .6 acres in size, is currently owned by the City of Hastings, and is under contract to be sold to McShane Development for development of about a 3,500 square foot medical office building on the site. So we do have that purchase agreement in hand, subject to some considerations, one of them being the title of the property and the use of the property. The property right now is not zoned or guided within the comprehensive plan for commercial development. And so what we're asking for tonight is a consideration to amend both of these items. The first would be the Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map. For some reason right now, the land use map designates the property as right-of-way. It ever was right-of-way, it's always been a lot of record, but the map does show it has right-of-way. So we would be looking to amend the Comprehensive Plan from a right-of-way designation as shown here to a commercial designation for development of the property. The other action would be a rezoning of the property. The property right now is zoned R3, medium-high-density residence, and we would be looking for a rezoning of this property to C1, which would be General Commerce. As you take a look at the map here, the property directly across the road to the east, which is the bank property, First National Bank property, is zoned commercial. So it would be consistently with, consistent with an adjacent property, as well as this other commercial property along 55 by south of Westview Drive and Pleasant Drive at this location. And so we're asking for rezoning of the property as well. What would come forward in the future on this site would be a site plan for the development of the building itself that would come forward in the near future. So what we're looking for tonight is a, to open a public hearing and consider the actions before us for Comprehensive Plan Amendment and rezoning of the property itself. And I can stand for any questions, or you may open the public hearing. Thank you.
All right, thank you Director Hinsman. We will open the public hearing to start. If there's anyone that would like to speak to this matter, you can step up to the podium and state your name and address. Nope? Going once? All right. We'll close the public hearing.
Commissioners. I have one question. Was there any thought giving, given to talking to the county and rezoning the other piece of property at the same time since it doesn't look like the county would ever have a use for that spot? Or is it not big enough to meet the size of what we considered a viable lot?
Sure. Good question on that. We've had discussions with the county in the past on their acquisition of the property, which occurred maybe five-plus years ago, and their intended use for the property. They, when it came open to market, they purchased it for future expansion. They haven't really addressed as what they would be looking for to have on the property. And so at this point, they, I don't think they're really interested in a change from the residential. They may be looking for residential, the future, for part of the CDA, or they may be looking potentially for county expansion for offices, which seems a little bit remote at this location, but, but we have no recent conversations with them, no.
John, do you know of any plans for the, the land section that's just north there that's looked like it's still going to be zoned as R3?
Yeah, that one, that's that, part of that county property that Commissioner Slate was just referring to there, so, no, nothing at this point.
Certainly makes sense to do it all at the same time.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair. John. With a, with the size of that lot there, with .6 acre, once they put a 3,500 square foot building on there, do we have any sense of what's going to be left for parking? Will there be sufficient parking to handle the required needs? It just seems to me like a strange location, the putting of building, but...
Sure. Commissioner, it is a tight site there, certainly. One of the things that we had the developer do prior to considering the sale was to lay out a concept plan for development of the site showing the proposed building, proposed parking, and stormwater drainage. And it's tight, but it'll fit on there.
My concern is if it does overflow, overflow parking on either that frontage road or the other thoroughfare is not a good scenario whatsoever.
Yep, and I would agree with that as well. We would like to be able to keep parking off of that roadway. The, I think the last concept plan I saw had 20 or 25 spaces included for the medical office building there.
Do you all know offhand what a building of that size would require?
It'd be one for 300 on that, so I'm trying to do the map math quick in my head on that one, so... Yep. I think it, it was pretty much close to what our minimum requirement was in that, I believe.
Okay.
Do we know how big the bank building is, kitty-corner there?
The bank building itself, I, I would imagine that's probably 3,000 to 5,000, if my memory serves me right, from when that was constructed, looking at some of the other buildings around there.
Commissioner Slate.
If the future building, we're looking at how many people who might be working there, so they'd need X amount of parking spots versus how the expected patients to come in, which we'd certainly need to take into consideration in the future when that comes in. But if we're talking 26 parking spots and say there's eight people working there, we're down to 18. So that's just a throw-out there. So it's probably enough.
Okay.
I would think.
So you get snow out there, and that takes up a half a dozen of them?
Yeah. You gotta put the snow somewhere. This is Minnesota.
That's what concerns me, though. You start losing them.
Yeah, you lose parking, parking areas on one side.
We will, of course, get to see the plat.
Right, yep, the site plan will come forward for consideration.
Correct. Which has nothing to do with tonight's rezon at this, at this time.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes. Currently zoned right-of-way?
Guided right-of-way in our land use plan, zoned residential.
Is it in any way a function of stormwater management? It looks like it's a little bit of a depression there. I don't know if it has any useful function in that fashion, either active or inactive. You got any thoughts on that?
Sure. Yeah, that was one of our original thoughts, too, when we, when we were approached for the sale of the property. We'd assumed that that's what it was set up to do, was to be a stormwater pan, stormwater basin area, and in effect, it hasn't been. So we, it's low, I think it'll need to have some fill brought in to, to raise it up a bit, but it's unencumbered in that fashion.
So the engineering department is, is fine with this? Is this, um, not, not, I mean, where's the stormwater go once it's a building and roofed? I mean, that, so that's all accounted for as far as engineering department?
It will need to be. As part of the site plan, when that comes forward, there will be an examination of that. They've provided a cursory review of the concept plan at this point, just to see if there was any major obstacles, and I am not aware of any that have come up at this time. So more in-depth analysis to come.
So no red flags in that, in that area?
Correct.
Yeah, I think it would be interesting, even at this stage in the game, to be maybe even looking at a, at a footprint. You said there's some concept. And I can't visualize what, where the building footprint is, or the remaining parking spaces. It just leaves me a little wanting for more of the picture. I mean, we're, we're changing the course of what this property will be used for, somewhat blind to what it's going to be.
And with the, with the plan for development, we have a concept plan that has been submitted by the developer that we've reviewed internally. And in hindsight, maybe it would have been a good idea to include that within the Planning Commission report tonight on that one, but I didn't want to get too far into the specifics of, of the site plan itself, because we'll be doing that upon application at a later date. Tonight, we're looking at the, the overall change within land use in general, and its conformity and its effect upon surrounding properties.
Well, for my part, I, I think I'm going to be fine with this. I can't imagine it being used for a residential use where it is. And so I think it's appropriate to make it commercial, and given the opportunity to see the site plan in the future for that particular development of this land will give us the opportunity to address or fix any issues if there might be some, so... Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, is there a reason, I guess, that this didn't come up at the same time with the building, with the site plan? I'm a little concerned about it, too. I mean, if you go ahead and change the, um, change the, the land use on it, the zone, or rezon it, and for some reason it doesn't work, now we have a piece of commercial property sitting there that could be up to anything. We could end up with a, you know, some kind of fast-food restaurant or something else in there that might not be, I don't know, as acceptable in that area. I don't know, I just have a lot of, little trouble with that sitting there. It's too bad that the medical building, they weren't proposing it down by the, the other new medical, and they kind of make that a medical area down there, but it is what it is.
Mr. Chair. Really, when we're looking at this, we shouldn't be taking into consideration what's to come in the future. We're just asked to rezon tonight, not, not look at the building that may or may not be able to fit on it once we do rezon it. So with the rezoning, I'm okay with that. The building comes later for review, and it may or may not work there when all is said and done. So...
I agree, but sometimes you like to know what it's being rezoned for.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
Make sure that it fits in there, that, that it isn't an obtrusive to the neighborhood, to the residential business, people in that area.
Yep.
That's my concern, but you're right.
Is, was there any possibility to pull in the little triangle of land that isn't part of the red square right now?
Sure. The area just to the west here?
Yeah.
I think that one's owned by Dakota County there, and I know in the past, they've been very reluctant to let go of any property. What they would do there is a question to me as well.
Just put up a shed, I suppose.
It's like a good spot, spot, the pile of snow.
Yeah, well...
That's about it.
Okay. Anybody got a motion in mind?
Chair, I'll make a motion for the rezoning of 2017-49 for future discussion for the, let's be, to come before the Planning Commission later.
All right, Commissioner Slate.
In the future.
You're gonna...
For approval, then?
Yeah.
Are you going to do the, amend the Comprehensive Plan separately, then?
I think so.
Okay. Is there a second on that vote?
Not yet.
Second?
All right, Commissioner Alpaugh, seconds. All those in favor of the rezoning of the property from C1, or R3 to C1, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion passes. So there is still the question of the Comprehensive Plan.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to amend the 2030 Comprehensive Plan to change the designation for this property from road to commercial.
All right, motion from Commissioner Alpaugh. Do I have a second?
Second, yes.
Second, Commissioner Johnson. All those in favor of amending the Comprehensive Plans, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. All right, John, next steps on that one?
Sure. Next step from here is we will have another public hearing before the city councils. So coming up on December 4th, we'll be ordering the public hearing and holding the public hearing, taking final action on the 18th of December.
All right. Next item on the agenda, City Code Amendment 2017-50 Funeral Homes in Crematoria in the R2 zoning district. Director Hinsman.
Thank you so much. What we have before us tonight is a code amendment to look at a couple of different items related to funeral homes and crematoria within the City of Hastings. One of them is to create a funeral home definition, which would also be inclusive of crematoria uses, the language of which I've included within the report. Also, an action that would, that would allow through issuance of a special use permit, funeral homes within the R2 medium-density residential zoning district, and also allow funeral homes as a permitted uses within the C1, C3, and C4 districts. This would be more of a clarification to what we've done in the past. Little bit of history on funeral homes in Hastings. As you probably know, we have two of them that are in operation right now, both of them within residential districts zoned R2. They're pre-existing situations that have been there for quite a long time. They're deemed non-conforming. That's an important issue that would limit the ability for these funeral homes to expand in the future. And so anything that would constitute an expansion, be it parking, be it uses, be an expansion to the building, would not be allowed under the current zoning definition. One of the things that is open for consideration tonight is funeral homes with the addition of crematories as part of funeral homes. And I know that we've had some discussions of crematories in the past and in front of this commission. Just as a reminder, cremation, there involves incineration, high temperatures, it takes about two hours or so. When you take a look at the situation of a crematory, what you notice, what you see from the outside, there's no outward odor. The presence that you will note on there is more of a, like an HVAC heat signature, like a small fireplace, but that's really the extent of what you see. There's a little bit of noise that's given off from there that dissipates over a period of time or a period of feet on that one, but you're not seeing more than that coming out of a cremation. Looking at cremations, they're licensed with the Minnesota Department of Health, and with funeral homes and how they're regulated within other cities, it, it runs the gamut. When we have situations like Hastings, old historic cities, it's not uncommon to see funeral homes and crematories now within residential areas. So it's not something that, something different that we would be doing that's out of place with other cities that are similar to us, but it is a change to the zoning district that we have at present. So when we take a look at the operation of funeral homes within residential districts, they would still need to be at our site plan requirements, including parking, one, one space for every three seats. Any new construction, expansion of the building or parking would require a site plan application review. And what we're proposing for operation of the R2 district is that the funeral homes would be required by a special use permit. What that means is it would not be a permitted use outright, but a special use permit would need to be reviewed by the Planning Commission Council. The purpose for the special use permit is to establish conditions for the operation of it to ensure that it would fit within the neighborhood itself. And so there would be notification of, of individuals before consideration of the special use permit, and that is what we're proposing as we move forward tonight on that. As far as what is triggering this at present, I'm sure you're aware that we have one of the funeral homes that appears to be moving to another location, and we have Wise Funeral Home that is looking to do some expansions within their site. All those expansions at present would not be allowed under the zoning code. One of those would be an expansion of their parking area. If you recall their location, there was a house just to the south of their funeral home at Fifth and Spring that burnt down. They're looking to expand their existing parking area further south to provide more parking for the business, and they're also looking to expand their business to provide cremation on-site as well. Both of those items would need to be considered separately under a special use permit, provided that the application language is approved by the city council and the Planning Commission. So tonight, we're looking at the language changes, however, in the future, these would be considerations that would be before you for, for action. We need, we also are having an amendment in there as well related to providing specificity for funeral homes within the commercial districts. Right now, we don't have any specific definition within our zoning code, any place for funeral homes. When we've looked at commercial districts, we've considered those to be retail and service businesses provided and allowed by a permitted use, not as a special use permit. What we're asking for is to have the language that we are proposing for funeral homes carry over into the commercial districts as well, just so there's further clarification within there. For this proposal, we did do some notification. We notified all the properties within 350 feet of both funeral homes. I did get a call from one individual today asking for some clarification on what Wise Funeral Home may be doing in the future on that, in particular, the house that burnt down, if that's where the, the parking lot would go. And I told her that that was the plans that I've seen from that, and I didn't hear anything further from that individual. And so that's what we have before us tonight. We also had the Planning Committee of Council review this as well on October 30th. They were looking at whether we should consider changes to the R2 district or not. They reviewed the item and thought it would be good to, to have consideration before the Planning Commission on an ordinance amendment to allow funeral homes in crematoria. So we have brought that forward, forward to you tonight. So the ordinance amendment tonight is a public hearing. You can open that at this time, or I can stand for any questions. Thank you.
All right, we will go ahead and open the public hearing on this. Anybody in the audience has any comments about this particular item? You can step up to the podium and state your name and address.
Might be the only one.
My name is Wes Lund, 127th Street in Hastings. I'm just curious, John, you said the trigger on this, you know, Caturia Smith is kitty-corner from where I live, and I know that with the idea that they're moving, I'm wondering, is there something else about somebody coming in behind them and reusing this facility, then, that this permit or this ordinance change will accommodate or make possible? So I have a little concern about that, and I'd like to hear maybe just a little bit more about the crematory process and what that might do to the environment around us that are living within a block of the facility.
Thank you.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Address a couple of the comments there. As far as what's happening with the Caturia Smith Funeral Home itself, I'm not aware of any proposals for the facility itself. Right now, if we did not change the ordinance, another funeral home could operate there, provided that there's no intensification of the uses on the site. But I've not heard of that occurring. It seemed, it seemed kind of strange to me that they would want to sell that to another funeral home and provide to have another aspect of competition, but who knows what might happen on that end? As far as commercially, what could happen with that property, there really couldn't be any commercial use of it as it's zoned residential right now. The changes that are before us tonight would, would allow for a funeral home and crematorium to operate there in the future. It wouldn't prevent that from occurring via a special use permit, but I'm not aware of anything that's being proposed specifically for that site there. As far as the cremation process itself, I've learned a little, little bit about that, I guess, over the last few months here, in dealing with the, the last funeral home expansion that we saw. And I was over, I, I was able to, to go to a funeral home in a little bit south of here, in Janesville, in which they had a cremation going on. This was a situation where it was in a commercial zone butting up to neighboring residents, and in a situation here where you had a residential home probably within 150 feet of the, where the cremation was taking place itself, and was able to sit out there, witness what was occurring during the time. What would I notice on that? Would I notice any noise, any odor, any signatures, what I know was going on there? And really didn't see anything. I mean, you see the heat signature coming up, there was no smell or odor that I've, that I noticed from what was going on, and in fact, the guy that was behind me was on a deck, and he was out there reading the newspaper. So I, I didn't seem to affect him when I was, when I was seeing that one. I did reach out to some people at the University of Minnesota as well when we were looking at this, just to review cremations and crematory uses, and there didn't seem to be any concerns from that as far as effects to residential areas or effects to, to neighboring properties.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Amy Martin. I live on the other end of the block, from west and the next block. And then my husband Dudley also owns the duplex right across from the funeral home. And so I'm also the chair of the HPC, and that is a, we live in a historic district. And so my questions are a little bit different. Am I understanding that, am I understanding correctly that the change in zoning that you are requesting would allow expansion, whereas now, if it doesn't change, it can't ever get bigger than it is, and they can't add a crematorium?
That's right.
Okay. I guess one question I have is, it's already an unusual use in a, maybe I should be talking to you guys, sorry, an unusual use in a residential neighborhood, and to change zoning in a way that could make it even more unusual and bigger, doesn't seem like a great idea to me. I actually was coming here tonight to find out if the, if there, if it didn't, another funeral home did not come in, would it ever be turned back into housing? Is that a possibility? But someone would have to tear down the current funeral home, or no? I got a few more questions, so...
No problem. I can sit if you're with you.
Okay, cool.
If it's not too uncomfortable. But as far as the funeral home goes with the, I think the first question you had on rezoning of the property itself, yeah, the rezoning of the property, if it was not, not rezoning, if the ordinance amendment were to not approve tonight, there could be no further expansion of either the funeral homes. They're deemed non-conforming, they could be used as-is, there wouldn't be any expansion beyond that. As far as the, the use of the property, if the funeral home use was to go away, it's a residentially-zoned property presently and with this proposed amendment. So the uses that could come in the future are very limited. It's not a, a commercial zoning that would expand more uses. The amendment tonight would be limited to funeral uses only on that one. So in the future, with, with Caturia Smith, for example, if they were to vacate the property...
So in the future, with Caturia Schmidt, for example, if they were to vacate the property, their uses left really would be residential, it's pretty limited.
Okay, that's helpful.
Okay.
Thank you. So in our neighborhood, some of you guys might know this, if you've been in town since the 60s, but there was a beautiful, gorgeous Italianate mansion, just like the one that, is it the Atwood House? The, right on, right up by the, it's the kind of pumpkin orange house that you can see in, yeah, 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 with the tower. There was a house just like that where the parking lot is across from the funeral home now. And that was, that house was torn down, not for the funeral home, but for the church. And so another question I have is, would this expansion also include creating more parking, looking for more parking? Because we, I have lived in my house since 1994, and I actually consider the funeral home to be a good neighbor at this point. When they have a funeral, sometimes the, you know, streets are blocked up for a couple hours, three hours, you know, just both sides packed, everybody's careful and considerate. So it's not that they haven't been a good neighbor, but I don't think an expanded use in this situation, when it's already kind of an odd fit in the neighborhood, is a good idea. And I'm sorry, I don't know if you own the other funeral home, you guys look familiar from the TV or the newspaper ads, but I'm not familiar with your neighborhood as much. But those are my thoughts in our neighborhood, which is a historic district. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to make a comment or speak to this issue? Yep, sure, step up.
Stick around, John. I will. That way they can follow up. So let me, let me see if I'm understanding this right. So if Wise wants to have additional parking, under the current coding, they cannot do that in that other lot?
Correct.
And I also understand that, like, Caturia's moving because with the changes towards cremation and moves away from church services, they're holding more memorials and things at their property, and it's not really designed that, it's more for wakes and things. So they want to have more room for services or memorials and things like that. So if I understand it, you're saying then too, that adding more square footage to a building to be able to house more for, is not permitted under the current code, or the current way things are set? Is that right?
That's correct, yeah. It's limited as-is right now.
Okay. So this, this is primary, but then it also adds in the opportunity to put in a crematory at a facility if they should so decide to do that. But this, it sounds like this is primarily for an expansion of square footage, either for parking and/or facility, if I'm not mistaken. Is that?
Yeah, it's a little, little bit of both. I mean, looking at what Wise has proposed in the future, one of it would be a parking expansion to the south, and the other would be the expansion of their services to provide cremations onsite.
Mm-hmm. So I'm a little surprised about the Wise one, because I think the last wake I went to, I parked in that lot.
Okay.
Did I not? Are they, are they being cited or something then, or?
No, I don't think they're being-
I'm not suggesting they should. I think they're great for the neighborhood. I was just curious as to how, I won't-
From talking to the Wise, it appears that the space that they have available is deficient for what their, what their customers are asking for. Just from driving by there when services are being held, I have noticed that some of the streets around there, there is some overflow parking that occurs there.
Yeah, well, and as Amy said, we certainly experienced that on a somewhat regular basis, although we've noticed, I don't know about you, but I have noticed with the cremation growing, there are fewer and fewer services being held at the facility, it seems like anyway. I can park a lot easier on the street, because I, that's where I usually park, but, okay. Well, thanks for the information.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? You bet. Can you, can you step up so those playing at home can hear us too?
Is it possible to have, make it possible for funeral homes to add a crematorium if they are in a commercial district? I mean, is that a possible amendment that could come up? Okay.
Yeah, at this point, you know, anything could be considered. Looking at the request of Wise and wanting to put a crematorium within the property, we moved forward with adding that use as part of the amendment. But, you know, any, any amendment is open to changes on that, certainly.
And there is no way to just exclude the funeral home that is being vacated in our neighborhood, so that, that would be, remain as-is?
I think that would be pretty difficult, since we're amending the zoning district itself, and both properties are zoned similarly, I think that would be next to impossible to do, there would need to be a different zoning district created or differentiated somehow.
Is the Wise Funeral Home in a historic district? I know it's in the heart of Hastings, but-
That I am not sure of.
Okay. I don't, I don't know if that would be enough, but, okay, thanks.
Sure.
All right. Anybody else? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Thank you all for your comments. Commissioners, questions, comments?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Burris.
Can you walk us through, so with the change requiring a special use permit, what's the process? If this gets amended and we have that, then what, who's to have to go through different special use permits?
Yeah, with a special use permit, they would need to come before the planning commission and ultimately receive city council approval for the special use permit. There'd be a public hearing process, notification that would occur for that, and the purpose of the special use permit is to provide certain conditions for operation to ensure that the use would not be detrimental to the neighborhood. Special uses within the zoning code are distinguished differently from what we term permitted uses. Permitted uses, you could do outright, no other special approvals necessary, but there are certain uses that are identified as special uses, which warrant further review to ensure that the use can operate without any disruption to the neighborhood and to set specific conditions upon the use to ensure that.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Alba.
John, help me understand this a little bit. I'm struggling with this whole thing. It seems to me that with Caturia Schmidt moving to the new location, which is already in a commercial zone, the only thing really driving this change currently is that Wise wants to expand. Is that normally what we do, is change zoning like that for a business to expand in an area, where they're not, where they're nonconforming today?
That's a fair point on that. I mean, the effect of this code change is most likely going to approve one, is going to affect one property there, that's correct on that one. In a situation like this, I guess the way that I've looked at it is, when you have a business that's been in operation for a quite extended period of time, that doesn't appear to have any negative effects on a neighborhood, I want to be able to recognize the use as being, being allowable, so that it provides some surety for the use in the future. Now, the expansion end of it too, we want to make sure that the expansion elements are something that can be handled within the neighborhood. With the parking, I think most people would agree that the parking would, adding additional parking would be a good thing there. With the parking lot as proposed, it kind of sits in a hole, so it's, it's pretty well blocked from the property directly to the west, which is up probably 10 feet or more. So that works out well at that location. You know, the question of the cremation uses on that, I know it can be a sensitive subject on it, from the research that I've done and what I've been able to witness, it seems like the cremation has a pretty limited effect. When you take a look at other cities of our nature, historic cities, where they have funeral homes in residential areas or on the periphery of residential areas, it isn't uncommon to have these type of uses allowed within those zoning codes.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Slaton. For up to however long both funeral homes have been in Hastings, they've been shipping bodies to other facilities that have crematoriums. Now that we've got a crematorium to the south end of town, I don't know why Wise wouldn't just ship their bodies down to Caturia's for cremation, instead of going to all the expense of putting in the equipment and everything that it takes to have a crematorium. As far as a parking lot, couldn't, wouldn't we be able to issue that with a special use permit?
At present, we wouldn't be able to, because the funeral home is not a recognized use within the residential district, so any expansion of that use, and parking would be termed an expansion, would not be allowed, as the ordinance is currently stated.
I'd rather see that ordinance changed than go about this end of things in order to allow special usage in the areas. Got a question in the audience?
Public hearing's closed, but I'll go ahead and, go ahead and ask your question.
Mike, can you come up?
Do you want to come up to the?
Yeah.
Thank you. Just like to respond to Commissioner Slaton's. Our business is changing, so just to say, just take it to the south end of town for cremations, our business is over half cremation now, so it's more of an economical reason why we would like to expand for cremation. We'd also like to provide that for our families, to keep that onsite and not have to ship it out and give it to a second party. And what you're suggesting is to bring people that are calling me in town, bringing bodies over to people that they're not calling in town, seems a little odd, there could be reasons why they called us and didn't call the other place, so. And I also just want to note, my neighbors don't have a problem with it. This is all about Caturia Schmidt and what they are going to be doing, and I just want to rest assure you, they will not be selling that to another funeral home, can just about guarantee that. So just a couple of comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Alba.
If these are changed to commercial, rezoned to commercial, and then Caturia Schmidt moves to the south end of town, now we have a commercial property sitting in the middle of the residential, is that correct?
Actually, no, that's not correct. The, we're not proposing any rezoning of the property. What we're looking to do is to add funeral homes as a special use. So the properties would remain residential, but a funeral home and crematorium could be allowed via a special use permit.
That makes more sense. Thank you.
Director Hansp, I got a question for you. If we're doing this for R2, why just R2? Why not R1 through 4?
Fair question, I guess. Guess we haven't had the request in those other zoning districts, so I, they weren't included within this one.
Where, where do we, when we look at other cities, where do we typically see funeral operations appear?
You know, it varies. There was, I was talking to Cindy Smith, her curator, a couple of weeks ago about this, and she said, yeah, it was, you know, it used to be a stigma to have, you know, these funeral homes in commercial districts, so they, we saw a lot of them within homes after the influenza outbreak of 1917, 1918. They had a lot of these within the homes themselves, and then these homes expanded into businesses that became funeral homes. And so in a lot of historic cities, that's not unusual to have those. Now, as time was forward, you know, most funeral operators that are opening new are opening within commercial districts, because there's more space, there's more parking, et cetera, within there. But when I was doing some research on cities similar to us, older cities, and how they deal with funeral homes, you know, places like Northfield, Red Wing, Stillwater, those type of places, most of those, about half of those places had funeral homes within residential districts and had some allowances for funeral homes and crematoriums within there already. And, yeah, and to answer your question a little bit further too, on the differences in the residential districts, the R2 district is kind of an anomaly right now in the fact that it's, it encompasses kind of that pre-war area of the city itself, and you have a variety of densities within there, variety of houses within there at present, where you go into the R1, it's exclusively single family, you go into the R3 and R4, and it's more of a kind of your planning to development or apartment-type developments itself. So it's, it's kind of a holdover, it represents that area of the city that is more your traditional town form.
Do we know what other special per, what other uses by special permit are allowed in R2 right now?
Within R2 at presently, there is, I think, like bread and breakfasts, towers. I, there's not a lot of special uses that I recall off the top of my head within the R2 district itself. I think residential care facilities may be another one.
Where do churches fall?
Churches are permitted.
Within R2?
Yeah, yeah, they're permitted with all our residential districts.
So a church would be allowed to expand?
They could, yeah.
Within an R2 district?
Correct.
Parking lot could get bigger?
Mm-hmm.
They could add an addition?
That's, that's correct, yep. If a use is permitted or allowed through special use, there's a mechanism for expansion. When it's a situation where the use is not identified, then it is deemed as not being permitted. And if it, if it predates the code, it can be allowed to exist, but there's limits on the expansion. You can't, you can't expand it physically, you can't expand it, the use is within the site, et cetera.
Do we know what other uses akin to churches are allowed in R2?
Other uses?
Other uses that are actually just allowed? I mean, obviously residential and churches, is there anything else?
Residential, churches, schools, parks, I think that would be most of them that I can think of. And you take it, your non-residential uses within the R2 district, primarily you're looking at schools, churches, those are probably the main ones within our zoning code.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Burris.
John, you referenced it on the crematory section, I mean, we're talking about Department of Health, NPCA, U of N, highly regulated industries and agencies, and there's no minimum requirement since the residences that they cover?
I'm not aware of any minimum requirements, no.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Johnson.
So, John, then if, if Caturia Schmidt moves, someone would have to get a special use permit to make that a funeral home again?
It would be, if they were to operate at the same intensity as Caturia Schmidt does today, it would be permitted. It would be, it would be grandfathered in.
Be grandfathered in.
If they were to expand it in any fashion, then it would not be allowed under the current code. There's also a provision there too, that if it, if it's not in operation for a period of, I think, six to 12 months, then it reverts back automatically.
So the special use permit is not attached, is attached to the property, not the property owner?
Correct, correct.
I just have a brief comment too. I mean, these funeral homes in, I think this is very traditional. You know, the funeral homes in the residential areas, I, it's very common, you know, and it's, it's a good fit. And I'm also where more modern ones that are built in the commercials, so if you're going to do one now, you probably, you know, you wouldn't do it that way.
So if you're going to do one now, you probably, you know, you wouldn't do it that way. I'm very comfortable with what I see here in front of me. And again, we're really talking about the Weiss site primarily. Yeah.
All right. For my part, Commissioner Barst, go ahead.
I'd say I'd like to make a motion for approval of the ordinance amendment, 2017-50, for the funeral home and crematorium.
All right. Commissioner Barst, motions for approval of the ordinance amendment as stated here. Do I see?
Second.
Commissioner Johnson. Is there any other final discussion before we call the vote? None? All those in favors of approving the amendment? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion passes. Director Hensman, what's the next step on that one?
Sure, next step is similar on this. There would be a first reading of the ordinance on the consent agenda for council on December 4th, so no action scheduled for council. And then on December 18th, the public hearing and ordinance adoption would be scheduled at that point. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any other business?
Other business? Well, I can provide an update. City council actions, council met on November 20th. They did approve that variance and OHDS review for Milligan at 317 West 3rd Street. There was no changes to that, and that was approved unanimously on that. I think that was the only real planning commission item that was moving forward. We're getting close to transferring the Hudson property, which is good. There's going to be items with, for council consideration in December for final actions to transfer that property. Again, one of the things that we're doing, which is different from months ago, is we're transferring the property prior to some of the preconditions of, that were once in there for site plan approval, finalization being completed. So because we are selling the property, does it not mean that there will not be opportunity to review the site plan itself by this commission? There's still items related to the parking structure, landscape plan in particular, that will be coming before this commission here, I would expect, early in 2018. So the important thing is, is we're moving forward to transferring that property, we'll no longer be the proud owners of it, and that the development is moving, looks like that's moving forward as well. So that's a good thing. And as far as our items go, our next meeting would be scheduled for December 11th. At this point, I don't have anything scheduled for consideration at this time, so I'll be in touch.
All right.
Motion for adjournment.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.